To the City of Breezy Point Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I will call the meeting to order and ask for approval of the April thirteenth minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes?
The motion, do we have a second? We have a motion in a second, any discussion of those minutes? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion passed. Councilor Lee is on report. Councilman Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The city council met on May third as scheduled, 7:00 PM. It was a packed meeting in regards to contacts. The Bolton and Mank update regarding the cooperative road project for Bushman, Ackerson, Ranchat, Nelson, Wild Acres. They gave an update of the use of drones when they did surveying along the route, looking for topographical information to provide. Additionally, they announced the first public event, the Public Open House, on May twenty-six, 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. I believe that's verified now for the City of Breezy Point. Then it went on to the first public hearing regarding VRBOs. The, all the city council did was listen to concerns from residents at that time regarding VRBO, you know, restrictive measures based on a draft that was established by the VRBO Task Force headed by previous mayor, Tom Lilahy. We also approved with Seth to move forward with the feasibility study regarding a community center for the City of Breezy Point. It was previously budgeted for two consecutive years, so money was allocated out and set aside for that project. And also, on a humanitarian note, there was $550 donated towards the cemetery for the City of Breezy Point.
Any questions for Councilman Miller? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
We'll then move to open forum number one. Would anyone like to come to the podium to speak? And if you do, would you introduce yourself and tell us where you live? Okay, I will close open forum number one and move to a table variance request application by Leslie and Peter Schroeder, 32656 Timber Lane Point, Breezy Point, Minnesota. Our understanding is that there will be a presentation of the septic system design?
We are prepared for that, yes.
Good, good.
As well as, there was another request by the council, by the commission as well, and we're prepared for that.
Good. Would you like to go right ahead?
Sure.
And Peter, if you would introduce yourself and...
Certainly. My name is Peter Schroeder. My wife, Leslie Schroeder, is joining me tonight. I'll be presenting along with Seth Grabdal. And we have two components to our submittal that we're representing tonight. The first, the first will be dealing with the septic, and the second will be dealing with the storage shed.
Thank you.
And I believe in the minutes, I talked about Martin Joyce being able to join us tonight. He's not able to join us tonight. But Seth Grabdal carries the same credentials as an advanced system, septic system designer as Martin. Seth has been on the property to review, to review the site, and he's been on the property, and he's taken a look at Martin's design to become familiar with that. So he will be joining us here in a minute. Before he gets, before Seth comes up and joins me, I did want to go through and make sure that the commission was aware of the compliance certificate and approval that was done back in 1988 for the existing septic system. And I'm assuming that you were aware of that. Is that true?
I was not aware of that. Not sure about the others.
Okay, we have that, I have that, that file which is on record at Breezy, and I can show that to you. And I'll explain to you why that's important, and if that, I don't know, if that can be seen.
He wants the overhead, Deb.
And the reason that it's important is because we have, there's a relationship of the existing septic to where it sits with respect to the lake and the road, and the proposed, and the proposed septic. And when we go through and we've done them, and we do the math with the eight-foot setback from the right-of-way with the thirteen-foot rock bed that was approved, that gets us to a dimension of 21 feet. And the reason that that is important is because mistakenly, the last time I made the comment that we were, that the new system is one foot closer to the lake. And that is incorrect. And so when you go through and you do the math with the six-foot setback from the right-of-way to the new tank, or to the new system of 10 feet, and eight feet with the 13, and we go to the closest point on the septic system, that's roughly 41 feet nine inches at the existing, and 41 foot one, so we are, we are, we are further back away from the lake at that condition. So, let me see if I can get back on track here a little bit. And so what we wanted to do tonight is, is raise the points of the existing system, its approval. We wanted to raise the position between the two septic systems. And then, I think, I think it might have been Roger, I think the last time through that pointed out, there's a lot of numbers on these spreadsheets that was approved by Crow Wing County. And so we will have Seth address that. We do have, I did want to highlight some of the requirements of the new system that Martin had pointed out. One is the, the location of the drain field with respect to the high watermark that we just covered. Two, that Martin, that the, that the design requires, and he's got it identified, that there's a whole series of State of Minnesota requirements are met or exceeded. And as a point, safety concerns is, I think, what they're really addressing, as they would for any septic system, drain field mound system. Checking every 36 months, required to check the pump every 36 months, required to record the event counter, so there's a, in the physical electronic structure of the system, there's an event counter that talks about the usage and the daily usage that then gets reported back to Crow Wing County annually for, so there's a record of 12 months that goes back to the county. The system, as we talked about last time, is replacing an existing three-bedroom system with a four-bedroom time dosing system, which is overdesigned based on the use of the cabin that we're proposing, but it does help reduce the amount of the effluent. Seth can talk to those specifics. The outflow and the time dosing meets, meets or exceeds the Crow Wing County and State of Minnesota requirements. And then lastly, as we know by Martin's credentials, that it's just, it's designed by a responsible professional in charge, licensed septic designer and approved by the county. And the last thing that I'll add to that point is, with the electronics of the time dosing system, that needs to be set up. And in the contract that we have with the designer, the, he is responsible for setting up that time dosing system to make sure that it's operating in the way that he designed it. And that would be coordinated with the installer. And so at this point, there is, I think what I'll do is, I will ask Seth to come up and walk through and demystify the numbers that are in that plan, and address some of the, some of the additional safety factors that we have built in. Seth?
I'd actually like to open it up if anyone has questions, like, do you want to go over the new design for it? Is there any concerns with what they're proposing? What I guess is, does anyone have questions on, start with?
Roger?
Mound systems, they're typically built for like a clay, any kind of water. So most of them, what I'm asking is, doesn't most of the moisture absorb?
Mound systems are only designed for systems where there is not enough separation, which is the typical 36 inches, which they don't have here. So it could be sand, it could be a clay system, but no, most of the treatment of the effluent in a mound is happens in that, whatever you need, that sand that's in the first one or two feet. It actually treats it much better than the clay does. The clay kind of just sits there and spreads apart.
So when, my biggest concern is leaking into the lake, being so close to the lake.
Well, technically with this system, it's going to be higher up and treated better than what's there, because it's actually a sandy soil that's there now. So you'd have more of a chance probably of getting into the lake if you were on a clay surface, in my opinion, because it would, instead of going down and being treated, it would run off sideways. It hits that clay layer under your, after your soil system, after your sand. And this, I was just looking at the old design in this one, the separation from groundwater for the current system they have is 31 inches, which is allowable because of the time it's put in and the 15% reduction you get with an older system.
But it is over 30 years old, right?
Yep, and that's why I think it's a good idea that they're looking to upgrade it, so. And this mound isn't going to be your typical mound that's a big, you know, they've got it set up with the wall against the road, and then it'll actually match up with the slope going down the lake right now, if we're worried about a visual concern.
So the existing mounds is, or isn't really failing, it's just, how do you know?
Because there was a compliance inspection done by, was it 2020, by Martin Joyce?
Oh, okay.
Do you guys have that one? I've got it right here.
It might be in this.
Crow Wing County has it, it was submitted and approved.
Oh yeah, there it is.
So if you'd like to look at it, December 12th of 2020.
I see that.
The, when you perform a compliance test, it's not as rigid as the requirements are for a new septic design. You have to meet that three-foot separation. You do not have to have your drain field sizing as big as current standards are, you do not need to have your tank sizes as big as current standards are. You just have to make sure the tank is watertight, and that is mainly above that three-foot level, nothing is going onto the surface, there are no components broke in the system. When you install a new one, you bring everything up to current code, which is much higher standards than the 88 code.
Marcy?
Tell me a little bit about the alarm system. So if there is an issue, how does that get resolved?
The main set, so this will be set to that, as it's put on there, the typical dosing, which is 70% of a four-bedroom home, which is usually 450 gallons a day, so this will be set at 300. When they exceed that by having extra people up or whatever going on, too many loads of laundry, there's alarm that goes off that warns you that you are at the 70% level of your tank with only 30% in reserve. So you can still continue to operate your household, but you need to cut back on your water usage until your next time dosing, which I believe he has set up for 75 gallons four times a day. So, you know, you'd have your, what would you have then, you'd have six hours before your next time dose that would bring that down. But still, it's only 75 gallons, so it's, it's not like you're going to be emptying it out. You can't exceed that. If there was any issues where they needed to get resolved, you would bring in a pump truck and pump it out. Or if you're planning on having extended family up, that's written in there too, you pre-plan for that, and that's part of the management plan, is you come and pump out the tanks, you start with a fresh system for the big weekend or whatever.
When Crow Wing County determines that a system is failing, what, what happens? What is the result of that?
I believe they give you, is it 12 months, I think, to get it corrected?
Okay.
Maybe it's possibly more, but you've got to look for a solution and come up, design a new septic that works for your site. So typically what you'd like to do is find a fresh spot for your drain field that you can put a completely new system in. If your tank is still all right, you can reuse it. Especially once he's old, it's better off to upgrade him. To me, 30 years is a long life for a tank. The standards for making them back then wasn't as good, so. But that's the main thing, is you got to call in, try to get a design done, and then if it can't be done normally, you end up here and try and figure out a solution.
Lee?
So you're not saying that this system is failing right now?
It is not failing, no.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, they've got it, it's on record down at Crow Wing County from December of last year, and this certificate is good for three years, and Martin's wanted to do the compliance inspection.
Is there any way that a person could put a system that would be similar in size to that?
Yes, the way they have it laid out, this is actually, so the sizing of the drain field is approximately the same size. You're actually gaining separation, because like I said, the old one, what he found was 31 inches of separation, and the standard for a regular system is 36. So with this mound system, I think he said there's 24 inches of good soil there, you'd add another foot on top, then add your foot of rock, and then you have a normal conforming drain field like anyone else would have in a typical house.
So basically, they can use the old footprint, they have to just take everything out?
Um, so, yeah, you could, well, the new footprint is actually, what they've got here is moving it over to a new drain field site, because you typically don't want to reconstruct on the same site, because it's been, who knows what, who dug it up did before. You know, it's typical, it's nice, you want to use a virgin soil to put it on. So they have the site right next to their old one, and then they would remove the old drain field and put the new tanks where those are at, and the old tanks would be pumped and removed and hauled away.
I think, I think the question that I have is that, you know, this isn't probably going to be the only situation, there's going to be a lot of cabins and homes that have had old systems in it that probably are failing or they're shot. Therefore, the homeowner's going to have to put a new system in, and maybe some of these lots aren't going to have the room for it.
Yep, and I think that's, they actually, you know, well, they're meeting their current setback for their currently compliant system. I think it's a much better idea to find ways to work around that and make these places still, you know, usable as a regular home with a working septic system, especially where they're at, you know, the other alternative, if you can't get, well, they don't, right now their system works fine, they're just looking to upgrade, so if there is an issue in the future, like say, there's, that spot where they have the one spot left for their system doesn't get wrecked, or someone doesn't use it, or anything like that. Yeah, I, I don't know, I guess, that's something that the council has to look at, and the city has to look at, and the county has to look at. I don't think just abandoning them, you know. And like I said, if you go to get a permit, if you go to sell your place, you have to have a compliance test done. So the ones that aren't working are getting filed, so. I don't think that, but that doesn't apply to them right now, so.
Tracy?
It's my understanding, and I've done a little bit of research with the county and the DNR and others, that the system is a nifty system, and it has been approved by the county, as you said, but the location of it has never been established by the, they haven't approved the location of the system. They approved the system, but they haven't said yes or no, and they're leaving it up to us to determine whether or not it's far enough away from, from the lake. And I guess my question has, and continues to be, the, it's supposed to be 75 feet from the ordinary high watermark, okay? What does the system do to overcome the fact that it's not 75, even though it may, existing may be okay? But what does this do that makes it better or equally as good as having been 75 feet away?
Well, the main thing about this place is they don't have 75 feet away, is the issue we're dealing with today. So the thing it does improve over the current system is it raises that separation, because typically the, the effluent from the septic, especially in the sandy soil they're in there, it's not traveling, it's going straight down. So the only improvement you're going to get is with a higher above the water table to get that to migrate out. The 75-foot setback is a number they have set, because it's a good number to stay away, you know, it's, you know, that's, I guess, what's up to the council to decide here, is if they would, you know, if you guys would approve it, because it's just the way the lot is.
And the, and this really, I'm asking out of my own curiosity, it's my understanding that if you, if you have a water softener uses salt, the salt is still going to go through the system and the, remains that the salt is still going to get into the lake. Is that true?
I don't know anything about that part of it.
You don't?
No.
You don't? You really don't? Okay.
Not, not salt from water softeners. My, my guess is that treats the water inside in the salt, I've never heard of the salt migrating out of the septic.
Well, there's a certain amount of salt that migrates, and Pelican Lake has had a challenge with that, that they're starting to worry about facing. They're trying to get, I don't need to waste your time with this tonight.
No, that's all right. If I knew anything on that subject, I would, but that's where, you know, a part of a, you know, an operating permit too, is you could have a requirement that every year, or, you know, for the first, you know, six months, they get their effluent tested. And if it meets the standards of the state, test again in another six months, and if they meet it again, then you could possibly drop that off and just have that be an every three-year test to make sure that it's complying with the standards. But the main thing that I'm just trying to get across here is the, they have a compliance system that's already in the same area as the one they're proposing to put in. This will have more steps to ensure that it doesn't get overloaded and put into the lake. And so I just, my opinion is, a newer system with these safety checks on it is far superior to the one they currently have. And their, one they currently have is compliant with the county and the state.
Question, when they test them, do they do like a boring, go down into the soil?
No, you take a, you take a sample right, right in the pump tank right before the effluent goes into the drain field, and then you send that into the water lab to test for fecal coliforms and TSS and anything, and CBODs to see if they're meeting or performing above the standards of the State of Minnesota.
So in other words, the drain field, the mound system doesn't really get tested?
It tests the fluid that, right before it goes into the mound system, and that's how they tell.
Once it hits the mound system, how do you know it's not failing? I, I'm just asking.
Just because of the rules the State of Minnesota has set forth. If the, if the effluent going into the drain field area...
Right, but you're building it now, five years from now, there's no way to test them to see if they're leaking it, leaching into the lake? There's got to be a way, right?
Well, their standard of testing that is to test the effluent that goes into the mound, and if it meets these certain criteria that it's under the state levels that they have in 70, 80, that three foot of soil before the water table will sufficiently treat that effluent before it gets to the groundwater, and more than sufficiently. Three foot is their very safety, safe bubble. So it should be, like, it should be normal, safe effluent water going back into the water table, just like everybody else's system works too.
Mark, do you have any questions?
No questions, but maybe just a statement of point that there are other operating septic systems that are along that shoreline as well, that are not, you know, being improved to this superior standard. So that's something that I would consider, you know, just from my personal standpoint.
Yeah, I think it's very proactive to upgrade your system, especially after 30 years, so. And it's a way to work with everybody to see if we can, you know, get it for the future.
Jerry?
If, if this system were installed, what would be the recommended regular maintenance that should be done to keep this system functioning properly?
Right now, just for a standard system, it's every 36 months, they recommend pumping the tank and jetting, cleaning the, the lines for the drain field in the mound system. If there's an operating permit, this could be accelerated to every year, or, you know, whatever the council feels necessary, but as I said, that's what they've got on there too with the time dosing, is they will be reporting in their annual report how much gallons they're actually pumping into the system.
So you're saying pumping every three years? Typically, a compliance is supposed to be done every three years also?
A compliance inspection does not have to be done if you're not, for a new install, it's five years, and then a compliance inspection is only required, a compliance inspection is only good for three years unless you're applying for a building permit or selling Any other technical questions?
Any other questions?
I don't know if that's changed, but I know as the years pass, that when, in my old house, I had a mound system, and in order to sell it, they had to test it. And back in the day, they used to have regular pipes that went down into the system where they could test that soil. And they came out and they bored in, this was in the winter time, we had to put charcoal down so they could draw bore into that mound to see what's down there. Whether that's changed, I don't know. Don't quote me, but...
All that's required now is a soil boring.
In the future, that, that something could be looked at, that if people are worried about what's going on after that, you know?
Yeah, like I said, the typical way to test for, to see what's going into your mound is to test at the pump tank, the actual effluent that's being pumped into it. Like I said, if it meets the certain standards, 170, 80, then, especially if it has the three feet of good soil to treat it, State of Minnesota considers that clean effluent going back into the water table.
Mark, did you? Okay. Tracy, anything else? Thank you very much.
Yep, that's happy to answer. Any questions?
Can I have one more comment?
Sure.
To further address?
Absolutely.
Councilman Marcy's question is, you asked about the alarm system, and the one additional feature is a Wi-Fi alarm. If we're some, if we're away for a period of time, and somebody, one of the family members were to be using it, we would get, we would get a text message on her phone, on my phone, on her email, and on my email, so we'd all know and be able to have somebody come up and address it, and call the, call the family and tell them, ease up, so.
Thank you.
Peter, a quick, quick question while you're, you're there. The designer emphasizes, and it seems like Crow Wing County did also, that this, this system should not be subject to traffic, to being driven on.
Correct.
Do I remember correctly, is there a retaining wall between the road and this new system?
There is.
Okay.
We've deliberately put that retaining wall there for two reasons. One, we don't want traffic on it, because we needed to find the virgin soil on the, on the property, so we don't want anybody driving on it, we don't want any snow piled on it from plowing or anything else. Two, in the current mound system, it's mounted up from the existing vacated edge of Timber Lane Point, which moves it closer to the lake. With the two-foot to two-and-a-half-foot-high retaining wall, that takes everything and allows us to push that whole system further to the north. And it has the great benefit of being a nice rock wall to the neighbors driving down, but it, more importantly, is it keeps people from, from parking in that area, which is, which is actually critical, because then it compresses the soils and it makes the... which is actually critical, because then it compresses the soils and it makes the...
Given the location of the proposed storage shed, are, are you at all concerned about traffic in between it and, and the road?
Um, yeah, that's a good question. Um, and, and we'll see that in a moment where we talk about what we're putting in the shed, but right now, the only vehicles that are there is, um, vehicles we drive up. Um, it is the hand-pushed lawnmower, which we can push over the mound system. Um, and then the, the boat trailers. So, that's really the only, the, the lawnmower and the boat tra- trailers are light enough to not have an impact on that, on that mound system. And as a matter of fact, um, the boat trailers could be over on the west edge of the property or at a forty-five-degree angle to, uh, in front of where the, um, on the other side of the wall from the tanks.
So, what I hear you saying is that you would restrict the traffic to just things going in and out of the...
I would absolutely restrict the, the traffic on it, and I can tell you that firsthand because my familiarity with, with, um, with drain field systems is when you put vehicles on it, you wreck it.
Yeah.
And, um, having grown up with Leslie's family on this property, that existing system in the last thirty years, there's been nobody that has parked on that. Um, and it would be a problem, because if that happens, it could ruin the system and then we're... So, um, it won't happen. I can guarantee it's not gonna happen.
Good. Thank you. Any questions of Peter while he's at the podium?
It, um, is there any way that this system could be made smaller, that it would comply with setbacks?
Uh, that one I might defer back, back to Seth.
No, because your property doesn't go seven, eight feet up the lake, so.
So, I think what we're restricted to is that ten-foot dimension for the rock bed, and you're gonna have to scream if I'm off-base here, but with, with that ten-foot rock bed, it could certainly get shorter, but then that's gonna reduce the number of bedrooms in the cabin. Um, and to make it longer, we're starting to bump up against the, um, the, the property lines. And so, this is really kind of the sweet spot for the size of that proposed rock bed. Um, does that help?
Well, if it's, I think what I'm getting at is if it, is there a difference between if you have a two-bedroom home or four-bedroom home and the size of that system, or?
Only the length. The width will stay the same, a lot of the models tend to be wide.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Now, my question for the commission is, uh, would you choose to deal with this part of the request, the septic system part of the request, now and separately? I see Marcy shaking his head.
Yes.
Well, I would, I would entertain a motion on the application for the septic system.
Well, I would make a motion to approve the septic system with a, um, condition that it is checked every thirty-six, that there is pumping every thirty-six months and a compliance inspection at thirty-six months, just to confirm that it is operating as, as desired.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Have a motion and a second discussion. Roger.
I, I agree, uh, the thirty-six-month inspection, and it sounds like, I still haven't quite figured out how you know if they're leaching into the lake, but I guess the county figures that out or something, so. But the new system should be better than the thirty-three-year-old system. And in fact, the tanks could be leaking on the old one, that you, how do, how do you know, right? So, you know, I agree with Marcy on that.
Tracy?
Does Jerry have any comments he wants to make?
Yeah. Want to do that now, Jerry?
Um, I, from a staff standpoint, I think, uh, if you're going to approve the system, I think the condition that it be compliant every three years and pumped every three years, the regular maintenance needs to be done. Um, I think making that a condition of the variance is, is appropriate, and, uh, I, I think from a staff standpoint, I think we'd be okay with that. I do believe that this system probably has more safeguards than any old system that's, that's out there today. Uh, and quite frankly, I think you're probably gonna see this question, uh, down the line again, uh, because there are specifically in this Timber Lane Point area, there are seventy-five-foot, uh, setbacks in, in most areas. Of course, it's, you know, it's an old, it's an old subdivision that was approved back in nineteen sixty-one, I believe. Um, and we're, we're dealing with redevelopment in some of these areas rather than new development.
No.
Lee?
Nothing.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, we have the storage shed. Peter, would you?
We do have a storage shed. Uh, and I don't know that I have the site plan that we had the last time through, but maybe if that could get brought up from the previous package? Yeah, that's, uh, let's keep going. I think that one's okay. Um, let's, excuse me, let's go one more. Oh, no, let's, I think we, I think we're gonna need to go back. Nope, let's go, let's go back to the landscape plan if, if you could. Yeah, that's perfect, thank you. So, I, I believe that the, uh, that the last time we met, the question was asked about the shed, um, what we were going to be putting in it, I think was the, was the overriding question, if I'm remembering.
Well, and I asked the question, Peter, is, is there any possibility of, of that being moved closer to the road?
Sure. Um, can I, can I deal with this into, in, in, with the quantity and the storage first?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Um, so, I was thinking about this, and that's a hard question of what we're putting into it, but it, I was trying to think of a way to make it, to bring it a little bit closer to home for everybody, and, um, it dawned on me when I was pulling out of my garage. And I think when you all pulled out of your garage to come to the meeting tonight, um, what we're planning on storing is probably a lot of the same stuff that you passed in your own garages. Um, and that is, that we have, and if we could pull this up...
You wanna use the overhead projector?
Please, please.
That's what you have to tell her.
Use overhead projector, please.
In the microphone?
Getting used, uh, overhead projector, please. Thank you. And so, I, I went, thank you very much. I, I went through and I took an inventory of all of the things that we currently have stored inside the existing kind of dilapidated shed that you've seen, and inside the sun porch, and all of those seasonal things. And I know this seems like a shopping list, um, but I went through and exhaustively just said, okay, is there any place else that this can go? And I tried to put some sizes to it, to all of them, and some of them are certainly seasonal. Um, but, and then I wanted to see what that meant when we looked at it with respect to the plan of the, of the shed. And there's a couple of things that I wanted to point out. One, I think the previous request had a square footage that we were requesting of two-hundred-and-seven square feet. Um, and with the, can we use the overhead again? So, in, in this, we've revised this plan to a footprint of a hundred-and-eighty square feet. And so, what you're seeing here, um, I've gone through and exhaustively color-coded all of these different little pieces, so you can see to scale what all these different little pieces are and where they could possibly go. And I think the, the reduction from two-hundred-and-seven to a hundred-and-eighty is, will, will work fine for us. Um, but you can see what that means is in some of these locations, we're actually having to turn sideways to get between some things, particularly the one in the middle of the room. Um, so, it's, it's certainly snug, but it is something that we can, that, uh, we can make work with the square footage reduction.
So, no boats go in the storage shed?
There's, there's no boats, no. The boats are stored off-site at a different location. Yep. Um, and actually, it's a contracted place that we take them, so there's no boats going in here at all. It's really, it's stuff that, it's all, it's all, uh, um, equipment that you could carry if, in, in, in and out. And so, um, I don't know if you want me to go through every one of the, every one of these things, but it could take a while, but I think that probably, I'm hoping that a graphic like this kind of gets to the heart of the question of what we're looking to put in. Um, and then if we can go back to the landscape plan?
Patrick?
It's Deb doing that.
Okay.
Um, and so, um, are there other locations that, that, that this could go? And I think being, being respectful, cause I think one of the, one of the components to the storage shed is that it's, it's also respectful of the views from the lake to the property. And, um, I'm, I'm hoping that, um, that you all got a chance to either drive by or walk through the site. Um, and so, when, when you're over on that eastern edge of the site where we have this proposed, um, with respect to the viewing of, of the shed from the lake, that is a far denser, um, set of trees and foliage and waterfront than what we have on the, on the west end of the site. The west end of the site with those existing trees, um, has a much taller canopy to it, so it would be much more exposed to the lake. So, in that regard, I think this is much more, this end is much more in keeping with that, uh, that requirement of, that, that viewing intent, I guess I would say. Um, and so, let's see. Oh?
How far is the structure from the ordinary high watermark?
Twenty.
Uh, that the, the ordinary high water line is twenty feet back, so we are, uh, I think we're probably about a couple of feet back from the, from the ordinary high water line.
I think most of the drawings that I saw, saw showed it at the twenty-foot line.
Okay, I think, I, I think we can, we can work with putting that back a little bit further. Um, as you know, this is, um, I was looking at, for perspective, um, that being either on or a foot or two away from the overt, from the ordinary high watermark, um, if we were to bring it twenty feet from the ordinary high watermark at the west end, we would have, um, been back it all the way up. I still believe that you're going to be having a much, um, more prominent view of the shed from the lake. In addition, the, the amount of spa, the, the, the distance that we would be backing it up from its current proposed location is not much deeper than these chambers. So, it, it's, it's not that much farther back than what we have now. And I, and I say that because I wanna get some scale to this property, cause it's very narrow. Um... And, 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 I'm sorry, and there, and there are restrictions to the location that we can put it with respect. We can't put it right up against the tank, we can't put it right up against the drain field. So, we do have some, um, dimensions that we have to be off of those, which I believe is ten feet. And, but it's also important to note that this structure is elevated, so we're not digging foundations for it, we're not digging into the ground other than piers for it.
Roger, who are you going to...
Oh, I was gonna say, could you put it back where that letter C is in the left upper corner, but I guess that's where the LP tank is. And the well evidently.
This one?
No, over that one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That is, so, so what's happening, what's happening on the left-hand side there, next to the LP tank, is where the, uh, where the parking on the property happens.
And there's a well in there someplace too.
And there's, and there's a deep well right there, which is the little light dot just north of the LP tank.
Oh. Mark?
How, how tall or how high off of grade is the proposed deck on the back of the home? Is that, is that high up? Is this a, I, I haven't seen the lot, so I don't know.
Yeah, the, the lot is very flat.
Okay.
Um, in, in fact, I think from, from the road to the lake, it probably doesn't drop more than maybe three to four feet. It's very flat and very sandy. So, what you're seeing, um, on the home, on that future home, is an engraide deck.
Okay.
It's a, it's a, it's a patio with permeable, it would be a patio with permeable pavers.
So, essentially, you know, it's shared geographical, you know, uh, almost the same geographical shape as the shed itself, where if the deck was high enough up, you could potentially hide the shed underneath the deck, but in this particular instance, it's not possible.
Right. With, with the master plan that we've laid out, um, you are, you're correct.
And then, and then also, up on, uh, if we can go back to that last one, Patrick, please. Uh, it, it actually was denoted by number, uh, letter B to the north, I guess, left, uh, portion, yeah, letter B there, uh, running parallel, um, with that wall system, the shed would then maybe even be similar in distance from the deck for your, your patio chairs and such. Do you use that, that letter B as, closest to the road, of course? Uh, you would have your setbacks, obviously, but do you use that for parking?
That is, that we would propose, um, for those, for those weekends that we do have much larger group. That would be front-end parking, and again, comes back to the discussion of raising that bed, so that we're not having people drive in on top of the tanks or the drain field, so we wanted to put that, a physical barrier to keep people off of there, so two or three cars could pull in perpendicular to that wall.
That was it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Marcy? Lee?
Um, a couple of things. So, that's designing that shed, you're shaping it like that, are you losing wall space? Storage space?
Yeah, I, that, that's a, that's a fair question. Um, I don't know that we are. It's, it, I, I think there's a couple of things that are happening. Um, there is a little, there is a little bit of height that's in there, so there's a, there's a few things that we're, we're getting wall-mounted. Um, but I think walls, wall for wall, we're, we're filling it. I think there, there's a few things on our colored plans that we didn't even color in because I couldn't find a spot for them. And, um, I, I'm reasonably certain that we're, whether it was a rectilinear shape or a shape that has the, the chevron or, or triangular ends to it, um, I'm not sure that that's gonna add, add or detract from the, from the usage.
Um, also, um...
But it is, but it is keeping with, we're, the, the thing with that is, when we're looking at this as a future, with the future cabin and the master plan, just trying to come up with a harmonious aesthetic that, that ties all of these components together.
When you were talking about, you said a view from the lake of, of the shed, are you talking the view from being inside the shed?
No.
Or what is, okay.
No, no, I'm talking about, um, I'm talking about our, our neighbors going by on a afternoon cruise, looking and not seeing, you know, having the shed be slightly, um, concealed by the, the waterfront dogwoods and pine trees and, and reeds that are out there.
Could it be pushed further, more, okay, where you got the square where the retaining wall says C? I think right now, is there some boat trailers parked there? I think right now, is there some boat trailers parked there?
There are some boat trailers there, but in the future, that would be the location for the, for the drain field, for the mound system, and we can't park anything there.
I just wondered if you could go more that direction with that shed?
It could.
Further up and over?
There's, there's a little bit of geometry at work on this one because the further we push it to the east, that lot starts narrowing, the ordinary high water line starts creeping further up to the northeast, which then wants to shove that shed up a little bit farther as well.
Patrick?
Tracy had his hand up first.
Want to go ahead, Tracy?
Well, I was just gonna say, I think what you've done looks pretty nice and relatively speaking to some of the other shoreline storage rooms I've seen before, I applaud you for the...
Thank you.
Patrick?
So I wanna get back to the state of, the, what is authorized, is allowed to be a hundred-and-twenty square feet. Anything above that has to have a practical difficulty, that he can't operate a residential property without that extra sixty feet. And I wanna make sure that that's addressed for the record. Wants and needs and looks nice are one thing, but it's a practical difficulty is a phrase this commission has to meet.
Jerry, did you have anything to add?
Well, one of my points was gonna be, we, if you're gonna take action on it and you're gonna approve it, you have to determine that there is a practical difficulty. Yeah, and you have to state what that practical difficulty is. Now, is that practical difficulty something that is created by the ordinance? Is the practical difficulty something that's created by the site? Or is it practical difficulty just that we'd like a shed that's a hundred-and-eighty square feet versus something that would be approved at a hundred-and-twenty?
What was your first point, Jerry? If it was...
What is the practical difficulty is, is the point?
Right. Is it because it's required a hundred-and-twenty feet?
Well, we, we allow one structure within twenty feet of the OHW or twenty feet from the OHW.
Right.
We allow that without any problems.
Right.
Is the practical difficulty for the extra sixty square feet because we need, want, or is it something that is attributed to the lot?
Right.
The other thing I think that we're, we're only dealing with the shed at this point, but we keep going back to the, the, the full-blown plan. And, and the question, again, becomes what's the practical difficulty for expanding the size of that non-conforming structure? I, I think in some of these lots, and I'm not putting this one out there as an example, but some of the lots, I think we try to put too much stuff, too much structure on the lot itself.
I believe, I believe we're also well below that impervious area, even, even with the calculations for the, for the proposed cabin, which is not a part of this variance.
Would your future plans for the house expand the footprint?
The, the plans that we have for the house, for the cabin, they do, they do expand the footprint.
It does, okay.
Yeah. And, and it, and it should be, it should be stated that to, to appropriately master-plan the site, we, I had to come up with some kind of an idea of what this could look like, whether it's now or in the future, so that we could be making the correct decisions now. And, and honestly, what I'll tell you is that, that, that cabin is certainly not a part of our variance request now for a number of reasons, but mainly because it's, I, I just don't know that we've, we like it, we like the elevations, we believe it's pleasing to, to the point and to the people coming down, coming down the point, and very respectful to, to the, to the view from the lake, from the, from the, from the road with the neighbors. And it's, but that could certainly change in the future as well, which is why we're not making it a part of this, we're not making it a part of the variance. So could it, could it be what it is in the shape that it is now, just shortened? It certainly could be and still, and still mate up with, with the aesthetic that we have for the, for the drain field and for the, and for the shed.
Is there, as a part of that future planning of the house, does it include an attached garage?
No.
It doesn't?
No, we have, we have no designs on a garage for this property at all. So, which is, which is why we're, we're really looking for someplace like the shed to be able to store all of those things that you might normally put in the garage.
Why I asked the question.
Yeah, I, we have no desire to have a garage on the property, mainly because it, it's just something else that is, it's just a lot more impervious area that we don't wanna have to maintain. It would be nice for the boat, but I don't, I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna have to build a garage and maintain it.
Are there any other questions of Peter?
No.
Tracy?
No.
Patrick or Jerry? Then I would entertain a motion on, thank you, Peter. Entertain a motion on the requests for the variance for a storage shed.
Could we have a recess of five minutes?
Oh, absolutely. Would everyone concur?
I just want, I wanna go through the reasons why we could approve a variance versus why we can't.
You want some, you want some time?
I just, I would like to have a little time.
Okay.
Give me three minutes.
We will, we will recess for five minutes. Well, let's, let's say eight o'clock, Tracy, is that gonna give you enough?
Eight o'clock. Well, I don't know, I'm a slow reader.